...projects noted the buildings would hold low roof lines.
Good evening, everybody. Today is July 5th, 7:00 PM for a Republican City Council meeting. Welcome, everybody. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing the Fourth of July weekend, would you rise to join the mayor and council in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business will be a proclamation I will read concerning Americans with the Disability Act. Whereas some 57 million Americans have disabilities which have caused many of them to suffer indignities of discrimination, and whereas some 195,000 Idahoans with disabilities which have also caused many of them to suffer indignities of discretion, and whereas on July 1st, 1988, the Idaho Human Rights Act was amended to prohibit employment discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and on July 26, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the American Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, and whereas it is the purpose of this act to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas it is the purpose of this act to provide clear, strong, consistent, enforceable standards addressing discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and promoted full participation in their community, city, county, state, country, and life, and whereas the State of Idaho is committed to providing the most integrated, least restrictive environments for people with disabilities and their families to live in freedom and enjoy the promise of education, employment, effective communication, participation in their communities, and in the culture and sports offered in Idaho, and whereas it is fitting and appropriate to recognize this date and heighten public awareness of the 26th anniversary of Americans with Disability Act. Now therefore I, Bill Lammer, the mayor of the city of Moscow, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2016, as American with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Okay, I will move on to the next thing, which will be the consent agenda. I approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I'd like to pull for some more information, item number five.
Item number five on the cons-
Not on the consent.
It's not the regular-
Oh, I'm sorry. I make my mistake, my mistake.
So you drew your request, John?
Yeah, that's good. We are-
Okay. We got a motion by Art and Catherine to approve the consent agenda as it is. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is approved. Now, we have a staff recognition report. Gary Redner, sir, you have the podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're here today to recognize a project that has been near and dear to our hearts with, as the council knows, the city of Moscow's water conservation efforts over the last several years have been pretty monumental. We have Nicole Baker with us from the Water Department, who's our Conservation Officer, for lack of a better term. Nicole does spearheads the conservation efforts of the city and has for several years, educating young people. She has several wisecape gardens. She is instrumental in the mayor's Earth Day Awards and Conservation Awards, generally an advocate for conservative water use in the city of Moscow. Well, you've noticed out front, some of you were present when there was a wisecape demonstration garden that was put at the corner of Washington and Third Street this spring. Nicole spearheaded that effort as well as bringing a lot of volunteers forward to help. She designed that wisecape herself. There was quite a bit of work that was done on it with the end result, or the idea, that people will look at that, see what a nice job it is and how good it looks, and that they will utilize perhaps some of that same wisecaping in their own yards, which will promote both the beauty of the city as well as promote water conservation. So, we were so excited about that, that we attended the Association of Idaho Cities Summer Conference just this last couple of weeks, and we were so proud of Nicole's accomplishment that we put her in for a city achievement award for that wisecape project. And we were lucky enough that AIC sought to recognize that, and Mayor Lambert and several council members were there at the awards dinner and received that award. So I would like to have Nicole come forward, if she would. We'll have a photo opportunity in a moment. In fact, why don't we do it now, Mayor, if you don't mind, and then I'll ask Nicole to say a few words.
You fancy your camera?
Yeah.
It's our first time with this camera, so bear with me. There we go.
Get out of the way.
Linda's nodding safely.
Nothing.
Well, thank you very much for this recognition. It, part of this, a big step towards the city hall wisecap was, of course, our city leaders coming up with this, going along with this plan as well. City staff, if it wasn't for our leaders and our staff, this project would not have happened. This is such a visible site. It's a pretty important step in the wisecap program. The city is very proud of the program. It was established in 2008, has grown quite a bit. So this only shows how well-received it is by our citizens, our city leaders, as well as local businesses, which also stepped forward. So we had a lot of people in the community, citizens, businesses, that donated time as well as services for this wisecap to happen. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate all your leadership on this project as well.
Stand up there for just a second, Nicole, because I got a couple of comments I'd like to make, and then I'll recognize her presence. And Art, I gotta tell a little bit of a story on Nicole here, because last winter she came to me and talked to me about this project. And she's a very modest person, and she said, "I don't have these abilities as an architect, and I don't have the background for it." And I said, "Nicole, you'll be just fine. Put a plan together, and then bring it in, unless you and I talk about it and look it over." And she did that. And I thought it looked wonderful, and I said, "Just go for it." And she did the marvelous job, and it was because of her efforts that that front down there looks the way it does. And I think it looks absolutely beautiful. So I just wanted to give kudos to you, because yes, there were other players involved, but you're the one that made it happen, Nicole. And I'm so very proud of you for that. So the award's gonna be great in your office, to your building. Art, I want to recognize you.
And I just wanted to add that in addition to thinking up the plan, putting the plan down on paper, pushing it through, you were out there leading from the front, because I saw you a couple times completely filthy dirty from head to toe, out there actually putting it in as well. So you were in it from start to finish and are more than deserving of this award. So thanks so much for your efforts.
Oh, and one more thing. I told Nicole, as I said, "Once you start this project, I'm not gonna look at it till it's completely done." So I'm not gonna be down there nosing around. You hit the nail on the head. Art, Walter?
For those of you that are just hearing about this for the first time, it's one thing to walk the sidewalks down here by it and see it. It's even better if you get stopped at the traffic signal diagonally across the street and look at it, look at the corner of the city hall building from over at that perspective. It really helps the appearance of the entire building. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Your Honor, my name-
Yes.
That's also just the first phase of that project. We also have a covered bike shelter that will be installed behind city hall and a little piece of grass over here along Third Street, and the wisecap will be continued into that development as well. So I think it's great for the city to put its money where its mouth is and lead the way on these conservation efforts.
Absolutely. Thank you, Gary. Okay, the next thing is mayor appointments, and I have none this evening, so I will move on to item number four, which is public comment and mayor's response period. I allow 15 minutes total for this, and allow individuals to come up and speak for three minutes, and as long as it's something that is not in front of us tonight, or in front of the Board of Adjustments, or planning and zoning. Please state your name and your address, and tell us what is on your mind.
My name is Frank Bonjorno. I live at 1514 East Third. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for permitting a time for citizens to present to you with important public issues for your consideration. I appreciate this opportunity. I am here with the support of 112 Moscow residents and more who have joined in a letter that was written about a grant project involving improvements to Mountain View and an addition from Mountain View to Paradise Creek and East Third Street. It is part of a grant proposing a bridge over Paradise Creek at Third Street, just east of Hayes, to permit cars and trucks to have thorough access to Mountain View Road, that I want you to take another look at. This project is subject to a grant called by the Federal Department of Transportation, the Tiger Grant. I am coming to you tonight because I became aware of the proposal after it had been sent to Washington, D.C. I have lived in Moscow for three years. My house is right adjacent to the creek, on the west side of the creek. I understand this has a long and contentious history, including the restoration of the city council in 2007 that called a halt to the development. The 2016 proposed bridge will fight more traffic and through the heart of Moscow, creating a 35 mile an hour arterial through the residential streets. This will create effects for the whole city that do not justify the million-dollar price tag or the proposed travel time savings, according to the city's proposal. The problems the Third Street Bridge portion of the project brings are among the following, and more that contemporary traffic engineers and planners could share with you. Number one, Third Street and its environs will be less safe. Going forward with a car bridge and arterial design here will result in the loss of trees and plantings west along Third. An arterial and increased traffic would spell the end to parking on Third. Placing a bridge at Third where it is proposed for cars and truck is not in the tradition of the best traffic practices for contemporary street design or for livable cities. Circulation east and west in Moscow is not substantially improved for the entire community. Any time saved in cross-town traffic for any reason is minimal, according to grant calculations. The true cost of the project for the entire community is not calculated in this proposal, despite its high cost and substantial amount of local tax dollars that would go towards the project. Failure to acknowledge and incorporate in the full scope of the grant project in its planning stages ignores a history of substantial, facts-based, design-oriented obligations or objections to a bridge for cars and trucks at Third Street on Paradise Creek. The grant lacks full, meaningful citizen comment from the Third Street residents and businesspeople who would be most affected by this part of the larger proposal. So tonight, what I'm asking for is that this discussion be placed on the agenda for the July 18 council meeting, and consider that your grant proposal be modified so that the needed improvements on Mountain View can go forward, and the unneeded destruction of a neighborhood and iconic image of Moscow can be saved. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Shane, thank you, Mr. Bonjorno. Others that would like to come up and speak? You can go ahead and sit down.
Okay.
Come on up, Linda, and tell us who you are and where you live, Linda, even though I know your work. I know you quite well.
Well, Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. And also, I wanted to thank you for-
Linda, you need to tell us your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Linda Pike, 1026 East Third Street in Moscow. I wanted to thank you not only for allowing us to speak tonight, but I wanted to thank you for posting the information on the Tiger Grant on the city's webpage. I haven't had time to read it all, but I read through some of it, and I'm just so pleased to have that information readily available. I recognize that this grant covers a lot of ground. There are many projects included into this grant to improve the east side of Moscow, and I do thank the city for planning ahead and seeking the money. I was interested in the letters of support because they came from various organizations and businesses, and knowing the focus of some of those, I, it was interesting because there's so much, there's so much going on with the grant, so many things it'll do, that there are parts of it that I can see why some people would support it, but maybe not support the whole thing. But when you write the letter, it's supporting the entire grant. Anyway, I am here to speak on the topic, the same thing that Frank did, on the intermodal bridge across Paradise Creek. I'm opposed to this bridge supporting the vehicular traffic. However, I very much support the bike, a bike pedestrian bridge suitable for handicap access. This is in keeping with people, moving people in an environmental responsible manner. But I do oppose more traffic. I live on East Third, and I see the traffic in its densely populated part of town. There are two schools and two parks will be impacted, not to mention a very large apartment complex that houses many children and students. I see how fast and noisy the current traffic is, and bringing more traffic there is just plain wrong. Speed barriers would be more appropriate. It does not seem in keeping with Moscow's image to create a busy thoroughfare by East City Park, which hosts the Renn Fair, rendezvous in the park, concerts, and many other public and private events every summer. It is so nice now that Third Street is under construction because you can go to East City Park. It's so pleasant. And there's a wedding over there. I see different things everywhere. I go every day. It's heavily used by families with small children. More traffic just does not make sense, and will create more traffic hazards and require more stops for safety. Why one asks, one could ask, should my neighborhood be spared when other east-west streets are already carrying this motor traffic? Number one, Third Street is the flattest street going east and west, and therefore should be reserved for people, not cars. Since Third goes all the way to the state line, it'll just become a corridor to divide the neighborhood in the city. And three, the city allowed houses to be built right next to the creek on both sides, and with the proposed two bike lanes, two traffic lanes, and sidewalks on either side, these homes will be ruined by the city that allowed them to be built. More traffic through another neighborhood is not the answer to the good transportation plan. I ask council not to make things worse, and this will. Moscow builds itself as people-friendly, art-friendly, pedestrian, bike-friendly. This vehicle bridge is none of those. I ask the council members to each walk down to the creek on either side on Third Street and spend a few minutes. You cannot visualize what this will do by looking at a PowerPoint or looking at a map. You must see it and think. It has to be seen in person. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Others who would like to speak?
My name's Loretta Campbell, and I live at 404 South Ambien Apartment 1, or as my primary residence, which is 402 South Main Street, because that's HyperSpud Sports, which is the business that I own. I'm not entirely positive that I can comment on what I want to comment on, though, because it's before you today.
Oh, you cannot. If it's on our agenda today, you cannot.
The only thing I will say is I really hope that I read a different outcome tomorrow in the paper than what I've been reading for the past several years, because it's getting very tiring. And it's probably best that I can't continue to comment, because I've been thinking this over all day in my head of what I would say, and I can't say it without sounding very scolding.
Okay, well, please sit down and enjoy our meeting. How's that?
The other comment I would make is, just in conjunction with what they're saying, it's a little bit of a broader issue, but I think that all of Moscow in town should be 25 miles an hour. I think that there's no real reason that we should have part of Six, as an example, go to 30 miles an hour. You don't get anywhere, anywhere faster. So.
Thank you. Others that would like to speak?
For us.
Okay, with that portion, I'm gonna stop the public comment, but I am gonna respond to a couple of things, because, Mr. Bonjorno, I'm gonna explain to you, you said you've lived here for three years, so I'm gonna go back in history on things you don't know. And that started off in the 1999 Comprehensive Plan Rewrite. And back then, in 1999, it was discussed about a bridge going through Third Street to connect east and the west side of town. And then again, in the 2009 comp plan that was completed, and at one time, we started that work in 2007, because I was the council president at that time. I was on the steering committee, as well as Walter Steed, and I even believe Linda was on there as well, Linda Paul. And I'm gonna read something from that comp plan of 2009. This document, it'll be noted as seven years old, and this is on section 3.9. It says, "The city's transportation comprehensive commission, the city's transportation commission and city council have previously discussed whether to construct a vehicle bridge across Paradise Creek in order to extend Third Street East to connect to Mountain View Road. Recently, citizens have questioned why a Third Street vehicular bridge had not been already constructed to reduce the amount of traffic flow on Sixth Street, B Street, and Hay Street. In the future of the city, should the study such a connection of Third Street to Mountain View Road and the impacts and benefits associated with, to the adjacent neighborhoods and the community at large?" So that was part of the commission's transportation plan in the comp plan of 2009. And then, in July of 2014, the multimodal transportation plan that was actually started prior to myself becoming a mayor in 2013, was brought before the council and approved, and it had the connection of Third Street Bridge as well as a vehicular bridge to connect the east and the west. And then more recently, on October 29, 2015, the Transportation Commission endorsed that bridge as well. And so, you see, folks, yes, we do have a Tiger Grant out there, and yes, it includes a number of things, and we won't know the outcome of that Tiger Grant until in September or later than September. With that, I can, with confidence, say we're not gonna go through and make an adjustment on that grant. We're gonna go through with how it was wrote up, because it's a very well-thought-after plan. The point that I want to make here is that there was many citizens involved in this, that both were for the bridge and those that were against the bridge. So that has been something that's been going on for years. This isn't a decision that has been made lightly in the just past few months by this council or this city. It's something that's been going ongoing for 17 years. And so I just wanted to share that with you folks. Linda, you want to make a comment? Please get up here and state your name and your address, Linda, even though I've known you forever. And please, let me ensure remarks for three minutes, Linda.
My, my name is Linda Paul. I live at the northeast corner of A and Jefferson, 304 East A, and I do not live on Third Street. I'm not near this proposed plan. However, I have followed the necessity for the community to have a livable, modern, and environmentally sound series of policies for the development of our community, so that we can retain the quality of life that we have and certain icons of the community, such as the beautiful avenue along Third Street. And I simply wanted to remind the mayor that in 2007, the entire council voted to table and to reject the notion of a vehicular bridge along Third Street at the, at the confluence of Paradise Creek and East Third. It seems to me that the, I've reviewed all of the recent documents. In 2013, when the, the current multimodal transportation plan was being considered, I was just recovering from, I was doing my death-defying act at that point, and recovering so that I would have days like this to come back and haunt you all for the, the fact that you do need to include in a very deliberate way the comprehensive view of livable cities. And this project is spectacularly bad, as it takes this little piece and proposes a vehicular bridge on Third. It does not advantage the grant at all. And I am so sorry to see that it got pasted on to what is really a needed policy and, and program, and I hope that the Mountain View portion is funded, but I can't support it if you insist on continuing this community-destroying part of it. So I hope that you will reconsider thinking about where the, the bridge part of this is going. Thank you for letting me have a moment.
Thank you, Linda. Well, you know, folks, if you look around our town, there's a number of things that have changed in the last 16, 17 years. All you have to do is drive out Mountain View, and you see a really nice ball, community ball, playfield complex that was not there a few years back. You see all kinds of development on the east side of Mountain View that was never there until the last decade or so. There is a Third Street development plan that's gone right straight across Mountain View, and a number of different homes has been before. Planning, zoning, this council has been improved. So you see, as time goes on, things changes, and changes happen in our life. Now this, and I'll tell you what this mayor thinks. This mayor believes deeply in his heart that it is not gonna destroy the value of this town, nor our integrity. And with our Tiger Grant, we do not know what we will or will not get. And so, we're gonna have to wait and assess that. We may not get anything. We don't know that. But we certainly put into it because it's part of the plan. As is with that Third Street Bridge, there is other traffic calming devices, like roundabouts and other such things, stoplights and some things of that nature as well. So there's more to it than just one piece of that Tiger Grant. There's multiple facets of that that is very, very important to us. And so with that, folks, I'm gonna close this discussion and move on, and we'll go on to the next item, which is number five, which is the downtown public restrooms. Dwight Curtis.
All right, well, good evening. I'm here to talk about our downtown restroom project. We had visited this before, and due to pricing, we're revisiting it again now. And so I'll run you through our project timeline and gen, and basically, back in 2015, we had a steering committee that analyzed this, and we came up with the, the needs that we needed in a project, and we had Design West produce the design that was approved by the city council in December of 15. We went out to bid in March of this year, and the low bid was $191,000. We went out to bid in March of this year, and the low bid was $191,600. And the council decided that that was just way too much, and rejected the bids all in March, or April of this year. And last, last week, I brought this back to you for, or to the Public Works Finance Committee, to asking for direction on where you want to go with this. And, and then, of course, here we are tonight. Came up with some different options, and of course, added option four, because, I mean, maybe you've got some ideas that I didn't come up with. The first one was to take what we had already and possibly go out and rebid that. We did talk to some of the companies that bid on the last project to get their, their thoughts on why things were so high. And one of the ideas was that just the timing of it, they thought a fall project might have a better bid price. Also doing some interior changes, some of the plumbing, mainly just the types of materials that we would use. And that would also include the exterior, which, if you recall, we had a, an aged brick look to that. There are different kinds of brick that can be used that are less costly in labor and material. And, and I included some pictures up here, so you can kind of see what I'm talking about. And also, a difference in the foundation. The other option would be using a, or going to a modular facility, which we talked about before as well. And also, maybe this is just not the time that you want to go through this, so you could decline going any further at this time. Have a cost breakdown. As you can see, the first one is the Design West, then a, one of your modular units, the Montrose, which is very similar to what the Design West model is, looks like, and also a smaller unit on modulators. And for, because I needed something to work with, the price, the old bid number, I used that here, so you just have a reference point. Hopefully, that would come in less. But you could see, going down through the prices, our cost estimates with this, about $225,000, $225 is what we looked at, or came up with for the Design West. The Montrose, which, like I said, is a very similar facility, you can see that in the bottom-left picture, very similar in dimensions and everything, and I'll show you a drawing of that as the Design West model. That came in at just about $194,000. And then, of course, dropping into a much smaller unit, which, the Cortez, it's modular, it has two single unisex restrooms to it. And it came in about 98, close to 99,000. And the funding sources, we started out in this year's budget with $170,000 for this project. We used $1,250 for our bidding services, left us $168,000, almost $169,000. With the changes that we need, the rebidding would cost us another $1,500, and, which leaves us about $167,000. We do have, the Moscow URA has pledged or committed $20,000 toward this if we use the Design West design, and also a private donor of $10,000 with the same conditions. Here, you've got the comparisons of the two. The Design West is on the left, and the Montrose modular unit is on the right. And you can see, I mean, they're very close. They're opposite sides for the genders, but very close, and close in size, and close in, in just about everything. Side view, we wanted the shed roof. You can see that they're very similar as well. And this, I wanted to show you what, you know, the modular units are. They're made of concrete, and they're, they're very solid. And this is a stamped brick facade. That was one slab of concrete that they, they put down, you know, right onto a, onto a mold that looks like this. And, and that's what it comes out to be. That is not two different materials, that's all one material. And I just wanted you to see what that stuff looks like. And then, another way that they do it, instead of having the whitewashed look, so you can see the mortar, is that it's all one color. This is one of those Cortez units. And mainly, you know, the modular units kind of scare people sometimes. It's, you're afraid you might get what you've got out on maybe a trail or something. I just wanted to show you, they are just a little more sophisticated than that, or they can be. Staff took a visit to the plant that's up in Spokane. It was quite interesting. If you ever just want to go see something pretty, pretty cool, just go look at those. It's amazing what they can do. But here you can see how the, depending on the size of the models, how they have them split apart, and how they've got the plumbing alleys, and that one picture is a little bit dark, but there's a piece of one on a lowboy, getting ready to, to go on to its new location. With that, this is a repeat of those funding sources. You saw what the breakdowns were, and basically, staff is looking for direction on where you'd like us to go with this, as was brought out at the Public Works Finance Committee. It's hard to know where to go with this without knowing what the price would be if, you know, if we didn't rebid. So that seems to be a logical choice. And here are those breakdowns again. And with that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Dwight, the, the design modifications to the original Design West design, interior would be like FRP instead of tile, or something like that?
Yes.
And, and the exterior brick could be something that's less expensive? Have you got an idea how much that might tamp down the cost, the design changes?
I do not. I mean, they gave us some, I mean, they were just going off the cuff, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't use those numbers. One of the guestimates was, with all these changes, possibly down $20,000, but it was a guess. I, I wouldn't trust those numbers. Could be more, could be less. The, one thing that, on those bricks, the way we're going to do this, if we rebid, is that we would go with these lower-cost options as the primary bid, with the same options that we had last time as alternates, bid alternates. So you can see what, how that-
Add alternates.
Add alternates. I'm sorry, sorry, yeah. And so it'd give you a clearer picture of where things really are.
Catherine?
Well, thank you very much, Dwight, for bringing this back. I wanted to cite the Moscow Urban Renewal Letter that's in your packet, and if you'd have a look at it, it's page 22. And, it's in the fourth paragraph. In the letter, it's written, "The legacy crossing urban renewal district was formed by the city council MURA to eliminate conditions impeding the city's economic growth in an area located between the historic district and the university campus." And it talks about investments and appointments, parks and, and public spaces. And it goes on to say that, that the projects are including but not limited to deteriorating or deteriorated or inadequate public improvements in facilities. So I highlighted that, because I felt like that supported making sure that we have an adequate restroom, and that the public entity and the cost for facility structures and other improvements is within their purview to do. And then if you go to the next paragraph, there, about halfway down, it says, "It is the board's hope that the city will be able to identify potential project cost savings," which is what you've been talking about for rebidding, "while still substantively maintaining the facility design as developed by the steering committee. In support of this effort, the MURA board would like to offer commitment financial support of the amount of $20,000." And I wanted to, to bring this forward, because I know that when John came to the Public Works and Finance meeting, he was trying to make clear that, that the only design that the MURA would support was the one that was by Design West. And then I think that has to do with the point that, that Dwight's made, that this has been developed since 2015. So there, the MURA is holding to what the steering committee has put forth for us to consider.
John?
I'd like to get past, or get back to the thing that Jim was talking about, as far as we've got the CXT Montrose, and then we've got the DWA Design, and in both of them, there are skylights. And skylights can be fairly expensive. I would, and I don't expect you to be able to tell me how much they cost, and how much not having them in, the design would change the cost of the design right now, but I would like to know. And the other thing is with the Design West site work, non-applicable. I would wonder why.
It, it's included in their, in that 191.
Hmm.
Sorry. I should have spelled that out a little more. I think I had that in the packet, but, but that's why. For the breakdown, I needed to show you that it, it is, it was an additional cost. I brought that out as a separate email to you guys, I, I had just forgotten to add it, because it was already included before, so it needed to be broken out.
And then the construction administration. Could the city do that? That's a fairly nice little chunk for Design West, $8,550 bucks. And if we're talking about trying to reduce the cost of something, and we've already got a substantial building department here in the city, of course, that would probably be Dwight's answer and not yours. But we've got building inspectors, and we've got engineers, and the only thing that we don't have is an architect, but when it comes to be building the project, the architecting has already been done.
Gary?
What we're looking for is-
You had something you wanted to add here?
Well, we talked about, to answer John's question, we talked about construction administration, and do we have that capability? We don't have anybody who does construction administration at the city. We can do roadways and sewer projects and things like that, but it depends what the council's direction is. The only point I was going to make was that, the purpose of bringing this back to you, and the risk, really, the council has taken at this time, is the $1,500 that would rebundle it out for bid. If the, the previous, I guess, high but successful bidder, the, who bid on the first round, has indicated that the time of year was critical, that maybe some alternatives in design or alternatives might help, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, the modular units are still going to be there at the end of this bid cycle. So it seems to me that if the council truly wants to find out, and perhaps tap the $20,000 from the MURA, and the $10,000 from the private donor, it seems like a pretty sound thing to do at this point. But as far as construction administration, certainly whatever direction we get from the council is what we will do. I would also note that, and I think rightfully so, Dwight's amounts that he has on the board include a 10% contingency, which is something that we have been, as an institution, have been building into most of our construction projects. When we do a, a road project, sidewalk project, sewer project, we ask for authorization for a 10% for change orders, up to 10% for change orders, which the engineers, engineering staff can call for in the field. So that's standard, although it does inflate the cost of every one of these products by 10%.
Art?
I was going to say, echoing some of what Gary just mentioned, is the fact that what we have up on the screen there is a bowl full of apples and oranges, and until we can get something comparable with an updated bid that includes, as Dwight suggested, the add alternates that might be included on this, to see what we can put together for the Design West architects' bid, we really are fumbling around without really knowing what we're talking about. And having the DWA Design go through the Historic Preservation Group for their approval for its architectural fit is something that we've not had done with the other two potentials. And I don't want to get into that about whether it would fit with downtown or not too much, but clearly, the DWA Design would. So I think it would behoove us to go forth and, hate to say, risk it, but you said it too, but put out 1,500 bucks, see what the bids come back saying, see what they look like, see how many add alternates may be possible, tap into that $30,000 of potential contributions to the project, and then move forward, fully informed with all aspects of this project.
Art?
Walter's got the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Walter.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the staff to rebid the project in the way in which Dwight has described it. I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Note the second down motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Walter?
Thank you. We need to rebid it. Nobody's ever going to be satisfied until we do it. Gary, do we not do foundation, framing, plumbing, and, and electrical inspections of all construction projects of this type, up to and including three-story, 7,000-square-foot houses?
So we-
And commercial, et cetera?
We inspect every construction project that's done in the city pursuant to a permit, unless it's done on the University of Idaho campus.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it with that.
Okay. So-
I just wanted to get clarification on the motion.
Let me, I'm going to repeat it, Catherine, if you'll just give me a second here, okay? What Walter was wanting was option number one, a rebid of the original design, and authorize it would cost 1,500 bucks. Is that correct, Walter? Is that-
In the manner, in the manner that Dwight described it-
That Dwight had presented to us. And was that your idea of the second, Jim? No, is that-
And so that means that we're looking at just the DWA rebid, not the modulators?
You haven't, you haven't had, if I may?
Yes.
You haven't had a bid on the modulators. You have quotes-
Those are quotes.
-obtained by Dwight, and those are, are not going to remain the same months down the road. Could go up, could go down, we have no idea. They're not formal bids, they're an idea of what those modulators cost. All the motion does is, is direct staff to rebid the DWA design, to see what kind of number would come back.
Which is option one, and we know it's going to cost 1,500 bucks.
Okay.
Gina, did you have anything to?
No, sir. I understand.
Everybody clear? Everybody good on this motion?
One more comment is, do we intend to broaden the geographic scope to which the bid documents are sent, to see if we can include tri-cities and areas like that in the bidding process?
I spoke to the Design West about that sort of thing from the last time, and the way that this works, is the way it was described by me, or to me, was that any of these companies that are interested in this sort of thing, they have access to all of these. So, and the likelihood for such a small project, for, you know, a small company to come out isn't very high, but if they're interested, needing the work, they have access to all of these when they're looking, is, is the way that was described to me.
Okay, we ready to go? John, I'll start to roll with you.
Dwight's got one more thing.
I'm sorry, I don't know if this has bearing on, on the motion, but if we were to, talking about the skylights, any modification from this point on of what Design West gave us the quote of the 1,500 on would probably cost more money. To eliminate a skylight, they would have to calculate, you know, what that, what that would be, so they would probably charge one.
That brings up another conversation. So Walter, you got the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dwight, it just has to be put in as a deductive alternate in- in the bid docs. It's one sentence, you know, deduct skylights, and you get a number.
Okay.
They don't have to design it.
Everybody good?
I'm, I'm good with that. I mean, they don't have to, they're going to have to put the same amount of wood and everything else up on the roof, they just won't have to cut the hole. And then, they won't have to add the other stuff. So, but-
Dwight, if the design change-
If, if they say that it's going to cost an arm and a leg, then maybe we ought to discuss it at that time. And at that time, we can also discuss not having the Design West do it, but-
Okay, John, I'm going to start the roll with you.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay, so we're going to go back after the rebuilding. Dwight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, the next thing, we'll go into reports. We'll start with you, Art. Do you have any reports?
The Public Works and Finance items were addressed here tonight, and there were no other meetings that I had.
Catherine?
There were two hearings for planning and zoning, and then there was historic preservation, and they have, they had quite a lengthy meeting. I read the minutes, and I decided not to sum them up tonight.
All right, very good. Walter?
Didn't have any commission meetings. Had two events that I did attend, I'd like to mention. One was the Association of Idaho Cities in Boise last week, a two-day meeting that the mayor, myself, Art, Jim, and-
John.
John and Gina attended. And it included several keynote-type presentations, plus eight to 12 breakout sessions, that people selected what they wished to go to. And I'll leave it at that, and let others comment if they wish to. The other thing I attended, I think is worth mentioning, was the ribbon cutting at the Latah Federal Credit Union down at South Cuplet. This is a real change in the appearance of Moscow as people drive in from the south. It, when you get caught at that traffic signal down there at highways 8 and 95, you've got an opportunity to look at what they've done at Latah Credit Union. I think it really enhances the appearance down there as much as the wisecaping has the corner of City Hall down here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jim?
I attended the Clear Water Resource Conservation and Development Council meeting last week, and got an update on the, the Clear Water Basin Youth Conservation Corps goings-on. They've got five crews out this summer instead of three, and things are going well. So all the kids in the Orifino, Elk City area have an opportunity to be gainfully employed in the summer, and hopefully get interest to come to the University of Idaho and expand their education. So that's going along, and that was, that was the crux of that meeting. That's all I have since the last one.
Hey, Gina?
I got to attend the Association of Idaho Cities meeting, and it is still somewhat like drinking from a fire hose. But very exciting, and really some very, very interesting economic development sessions that I attended. And I will attend my first arts commission meeting next week, and Parks and Rec will be towards the end of the month.
Okay, John?
The only thing I have is the Moscow Tree Commission, which met earlier this afternoon. And the, some of the things are still moving along, the revisions to the tree planting guide. One interesting thing is the tree risk assessment project. At this point, there are 69 trees that need to be removed, essentially because they're dead. And the Tree Commission would like to get as much of this work done in this budget year. And let's see here, Parks and Recreation Fall Catalog is coming out, and we will be part of it. The Tree Commission will be part of it with two or three offerings, as far as classrooms, pruning, that kind of stuff. And then, the Moscow Tree Commission is going to be at the Farmer's Market on July 16, and at the Latah County Historical Society Ice Cream Social on the 31st of this month. And plans are being firmed up for both of them. And probably the most important thing was there was a new subdivision tree planting code presented by the David Chot of the Parks and Rec. And that did pass, and it will be moving through administrative committee, and then coming to the council to, to deal with. And other than that, I was down in Boise also, but that's been covered.
Okay. As the number had said here, start with Walter. June 22 through the 24th, there was a bunch of us down there for AIC. We had a bunch of staff down there as well. City Supervisor, Assistant City Supervisor, City Attorney, City Clerk, and a bunch of other ones, too. Our engineering staff, just a bunch of folks. And that was actually, that was my third AIC meeting I've gone to for the annual convention. I thought it was the best one I've been to.
I've had excellent conferences, and I thought it was well-organized. And I think AIC is really headed on the right path for a number of things. I'm excited to be re-elected as a Board of Directors for District Two for two more years, and I'm happy to be that. So, and on the 27th of June, we had an airport board meeting. And with that in mind, on July the 11th, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony. They will start running the earthmovers on the 12. So we're going to take a little field trip for a little break of our budget talks on Monday, for all you counselors to keep in mind. So I thought that'd be kind of exciting to do and see. And then, of course, on July 4th, myself and Catherine Bonzol and John Webber were down, and we joined Linda Paul, and we talked about the Declaration of Independence, and what 4th of July meant to all of us. And that was a wonderful ceremony, which I very much look forward to each year. And we all had to judge the mutstrut, and they even had one contestant that they named Lambert, after the mayor, which was quite interesting. I saw kind of lab, so I really got a kick out of that. So that was, that was a fun, fun day, 4th of July. We all had a good time. Gary, do you have anything you'd want to add?
Yes, sir. I would note that we have Budget Workshop, as you indicated, on Monday. That will start at 7:30 in the morning. Formal agendas will come out tomorrow, with a break in the middle to, for council members and whoever wants to, to attend the groundbreaking at the airport. We also have, and I'm just trying to pull it up here, Quarterly Regional Breakfast Meeting, next Wednesday, July 13. That is at the Best Western, and is hosted by Latah County. And it will be the presentation for the CHAZ Health. Amy Isbell, the Clinical Administrator for Latah Community Health, will be there. So it should be an interesting morning. So if you would like to go, please let Judy know upstairs, and she'll make that RSVP for you.
Awesome. With that, I would ask for an emotion to adjourn to executive session per Idaho Code 74-206, 1C and 1F.
So moved.
Okay, John moved.
I'll second it, Ben.
And Art's seconding. All in favor, aye.
All right.
Opposed, we will not reconvene after the executive session, folks.